To order, please call the roll.
Coos.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Isom. Zingy.
Here.
Kiper.
President.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right, is there anybody here for the proclamation tonight? Oh, very good. Let me read it first. Whereas... He did it for sure. Yes. Thank you. Whereas Wish-I-Rock strives to uphold families, children, and foster parents' education, advocacy, and cultural awareness, whereas Wish-I-Rock recognizes the vital importance of partnering with parents and assists public systems and private organizations, policymakers, and other key stakeholders in effectively implementing parent leadership strategies, whereas parent leadership presents a parent voice to help shape the direction of their families, programs, and communities, and is an essential and effective means of strengthening families and preventing child abuse and neglect, helping parents gain the knowledge and skills necessary to function in meaningful leadership roles. Whereas parent leadership is successfully achieved when parents receive support and training and share responsibilities, expertise in leadership in planning, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of policy, practices, and programs that affect families and communities, whereas more parents each year are developing vital partnerships with service providers, policymakers, and key stakeholders to shape policy and practices and build stronger, safer communities for children. Whereas the power of parents speaking publicly about their experiences has made and will continue to make an impact on the lives of families everywhere, whereas Parent Pathways has created National Parent Leadership Month to recognize the extraordinary courage and tenacity of parents who have reached out to make improvements in their families and communities. Now, therefore, be resolved, I, Louis III, Mayor of Ketchikan, last year by the claim of February 2017, as National Parent Leadership Month and encourage parents in the community of Ketchikan to make a positive difference in their families through parenting and education classes available at Wish-I-Rock. Sign the second day of March. Angus.
I'd like to say thank you. Unfortunately, my family services managers down with the flu. When you work with kids, you get to work with those kind of bugs. But, you know, I think one of the more important things we do at Wish is doing family reunification and keeping children in the homes and keeping families together. And that's one of the key strategies to prevent problems going forward if we can tackle it early on. The importance of families and the importance of parenting, good parenting skills is really important, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I just got a note, somebody saying the streaming isn't on. Is there something we do or anything?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, Keith.
Good evening. I'm Keith Smith at 1260 Sale Street. It's my address, and I'm here representing Southeast Alaska Independent Living, and just wanted to say a few words about item four of new business, the ordinance 17, 1841. And just want to begin by thanking members of the council, thanking Mr. Amalon, Mr. Martin, Mr. Seaver, leadership from the police department, and John Flora and Zach Bowles, who have all combined with input, trying to figure out an ordinance that would create a structure for a sustainable, accessible taxi system in Ketchikan. I feel like we're really close. I look forward to your input. And I'm going to be here to answer any questions you might have. Also, just want to add that I've been at Sale now for two years almost, end of this month, it'll be two years, and I'm made aware almost every day of just how important flexibility and able to control, the ability to control one's own transportation has as an effect on the independence of individuals in this town. There's a lot of people out there whose lives, if we can get this going, will be changed dramatically in a beautiful way, and so strongly encourage us to move forward with this. We have received enough signals to feel like this is something that moving forward, we've got people ready to bid on it. We have cabs on the way that will be here in the end of the month, and hopefully, if we can all move forward, we'll have accessible taxis here in Ketchikan by the end of the spring.
Excellent.
Any questions now or...
Thank you very much, Keith. Zach.
Good evening. I'm here on two issues this evening. First is the new cab ordinances that Keith was just talking about. I wanted to take a minute to say that after all the hard work all of us have put in, it's nice to make progress, and that I, owner of Alaska and Sour, do cabs, support the ordinances, and I had also talked with Mr. Flora, and he supports the ordinances, and so we hope that those ordinances pass and will be good for a longstanding, continued relationship with Sale to provide ADA accessible cabs. On that note, that's all I have on that. Does anybody have any questions with that?
Not at this time. Next.
The second issue that I want to bring to your guys' attention, I sent out a mass email to you guys today. We have a large problem with our community. Right now, at the state level, companies like Uber and Lyft are trying to get in on the state level with minimal to almost no regulation. And with this regulation at the state level, they would not have to abide by our local laws, local rules, local tax brackets. This is very much so a problem for us, because if they have no control, they don't have to have any permitting or anything. Anybody can get in a car at any time and do as they please. The first issue with that is going to be the summertime. We have 1.1 million people coming through this town this year, is my understanding. If this bill gets passed this session, that means Uber drivers and Lyft drivers could be down on our docks starting as soon as this summer with no regulation, no laws. They're going to be down there picking up rides from the tour guys for literally a fraction of what our tour operators and other local cab operators are doing. And you're going to have every tour operator in here screaming at you guys, and you'll have your hands tied. There'll be nothing you can do. That is a problem. The second problem is Uber and Lyft do not carry enough insurance. This has actually been proven several times. When they're not in the vehicle or not picking up rides, they get to carry common insurance that is like the standard homeowner on your vehicle. When people are in the car, they do bump up their limits to $1 million, which is what the state requires. However, it's what happens when they're driving and they hit a little kid, which has actually happened other places in the country, and they don't have enough coverage. That's a really big problem. Uber and Lyft are not allowed, because they're not a taxi company, quote unquote, they claim. They're not allowed to pick up cellphone calls, and they're not allowed to pick up flags like cabs are. So what happens when they pick up somebody off the system, get in the car, get in a wreck? They're not covered because the customer in their car didn't come through what they call their transportation network app, which is how they pick up fares through the phone. So that's a big problem. The other big problem is, is under no local ordinances and being state-run, these organizations nationwide do not pay sales tax. That is a really big problem. I can tell you personally, I pay anywhere between $40,000 and $80,000 a year in sales tax into this community to use the roads that my cabs tear up, supply things for docks, you know, whatever the money goes towards, whatever you use. This is a multi-billion dollar company, and if I'm a little guy and I can pay these taxes and do my part, why shouldn't this company do the same to benefit our local community? This is one of the great arguments, but in my opinion, in my research, Lyft and Uber actually drive down economy, because they flood the market with so many cars and they bottom out the price so bad. And it's kind of like a Walmart thing. They come in, they run out all the other guys, and then the prices go up. So you're going to have problems with that. As a rule, right now, what we're seeing, Uber gets about $1 a mile, cabs get about $3.30 a mile. The reason why that's good for cabs, that they get $3.30 a mile, is because that money stays locally and it buys local groceries, it gets local cars fixed at shops, it buys gas, it pays rent. Right off the top, Uber takes 25% right now that goes right out of state. That's devastating for a community like ours. That's a lot of money leaving our community. On top of that, Uber has what's called the surge, and the surge is where the demand for rides outweighs the amount of drivers that are available to pick up the rides. What happens then is the price skyrockets anywhere between two times and 10 times what the ride would normally be. So now people are getting in these cars, and they don't know what the price is. At least with the cabs, it's regulated by you guys as the council and the city manager's office. Every time you get in a cab, you know what you're paying for. It's regulated, it doesn't change. Those are, that's the benefit of having regulation. One of the other things is Uber, who knows what they're doing with safety standards? You guys require us as cab owners to have a city-certified mechanic go through our cars at least once a year, make sure our vehicles are safe and on the road for the customers that we haul. Who's to say these guys don't run around with a load of people in their car and their brakes go out because nobody makes them check it, and they're not making enough money this time of year, and everybody's starving, and they get in a big crash, now you got a big lawsuit? It's just, it's bad. And then the other thing is, is they have, even though they claim they're not, they have had many problems with their background checks. Their background checks are short, they're not as long as other organizations or cabs are, and they've been having problems with bad things happening, people getting in their cars. So these are just a couple bullet points at this moment, but it's very important to get in and join the Alaska Municipal League now. The Alaska Municipal League is actually working to try to get this shut down to the point where it's controlled locally, and that needs to happen. And we need to jump in and support that fight before these people come to our community, pay nothing, and cause a lot of damage and a lot of trouble. It's inevitable that they'll get in. They're a large company, they're going to make it in, but at least when they do get here, we'll have some control over what they do, how they do it, how we enforce it, and that's mostly what's really important, is that we have a say-so on what happens in our community. So at the moment, that's my biggest argument, and that's my biggest point. Does anybody have any other questions?
First of all, last name's Flora, but I have no personal or monetary interest in the cab business in this town, so just for full disclosure. Zach, do you see Uber and/or Lyft coming to town as putting your certificates of convenience and public necessity at risk, as if you may not be able to support them?
I do, because of the fact without regulation and how much control, you know, at least if they had to come to you guys, we could say, hey, look, there's this many cars, you got to follow these standards. If they just come in under state regulation and flood the town with 45 cars, then yeah, that's going to hurt, that's going to hurt the cab business, because like Walmart, if you can get it cheaper, why would you ride a cab? I also think in regards to that too, that you are going to see it come here, because we are going to have 1.1 million people coming to this community this summer. So if the question of if it's going to be here, yeah, it's going to be here.
And they would have no 24/7 obligation, so if it's February 3rd at 2:00 in the morning and someone calls Uber, they may not get a ride?
That's correct. Benefits of cabs are, we operate under what's called public convenience is necessity, which I know you guys have heard about a lot. But what that does is it makes us, to a degree, be out there 24/7. What happens if something happens to you after bar break at 3:00 in the morning, and you don't need an ambulance, but you can't drive because you twist a foot or something like that? Let's say a family member that normally live with you is out of town, and you go to call an Uber ride because it's cheaper and no one's on the network. What happens if they run us out of town and we're not there to pick up that slack? It might be great for some people in larger cities where there's millions and millions of people, but this is Ketchikan. We're just too small for this kind of thing to be here. Any other questions?
Dick?
Yeah, Zach, thinking about the ordinance you and Keith just talked about, and trying to get handicap cabs in town, if these guys come flying in here and have no responsibility, do nothing, how's it going to affect your ability to take on the handicap cabs and still have enough other things going on to cover what's going on? Is it going to affect it?
It is going to affect it, because unfortunately, you know, I'm not subsidized by anything, so if I can't make money, then I can't support additional things like ADA cabs. Now, that's something we want to do. I'm not saying I don't support that or we're not going to do that, but if I can't make money, how do I sustain to provide additional services that the community needs if these guys come in and beat on us and they have a record and a repertoire of not dealing with that industry of ADA? So we're here trying to provide for that industry, yet we're getting beat up so badly on the other side that we can't support it, and I don't want that to happen.
Yes, Zach, I'm glad you brought it up. I was going to bring it up, because I've been reading in the Juneau paper about how the city up there is concerned about the tourist angle, all these guys, there wouldn't be any control over, you know, who's doing tours, they can just come down. And that's a big, they really have a big concern on that area. So I was going to bring it up to the council and see if we wanted to, I mean, at least get copies of what they're trying to do up there and then maybe make a resolution, send a letter or something, share our concerns like Juneau.
Well, I can tell you municipalities and cab companies from all over the state are in on this fight. It is going through right now, and they're working. They had a meeting in the House, on the House Transportation Committee today, and it's had public hearing where you've come in and talked about it like this. And, you know, there's points that people want it, and there's a lot of people that don't, but like I said, when all of a sudden you're taking tax money out, you know, you're taking all these safety features out that we have by being regulated and many other things, then you know it becomes a problem. And this is why the biggest thing that we need to fight for out of all this and in joining the fight is that we keep the local control, so that you guys, as our community leaders, have the say-so in what happens in our community, not some billion-dollar company coming in and messing with us. And it's important for us to fight now, because what, I call it buyer's remorse, but that's what we're going to have. If we let it in and we don't regulate it, this is a billion-dollar company that's got money to fight us for years. So it would just be smarter on behalf of all the municipalities across the state to shut it down the way the bill reads right now until it comes up to local control, because once we give it, it is so hard to take it back.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You too.
Paul?
Good evening. I'm here to talk once again about water rates. I got an email from Mr. Newell over the weekend and said that we were going to be discussing, or you were going to be discussing water rates again. Just figured I'd come back and bring up a few more points. You know, EC Phillips is a really large consumer of water, and the reason is, is because we operate year-round. And what we do here in the fall, winter, and early spring is really marginal business for us, but it does provide jobs for people who would otherwise draw unemployment through the winter, provides some jobs in some freight for the freight companies, you know, provides market for the fishermen for some of those small fisheries that it's not worth the big guys staying open for in the wintertime, but for small guys, it keeps us, keeps something going. You know, we're also using utilities and fuel and all the other things that come into play with that. Secondly, it's a source of pride for us. We take pride in keeping these jobs local and not sending that fish somewhere else to be processed. When we talk to our customers, we talk about Alaskan fish, and it's being processed here. It's not going to China and then coming back to the United States. It's all happening here, and that's important to us as well. What's really important is staying competitive as well for our fishermen and for the company, because we want to be able to survive. I'd like to reiterate that, you know, we've talked about this fixed versus variable costs and the meter rates. The meter rates will not solve the problems that we have here in the water department. With a 98% fixed cost and a 2% variable cost, the meter rates is, that's not going to solve that problem. The problem is a result of the infrastructure. I mean, even in the FCS report, it said that, you know, the reason that we need to do the increases that they're asking for to fund infrastructure replacement and maintain reasonable reserve levels. In looking at that, I also, if I'm, I read it correctly, the FCS rate study said that current service rates are meeting current obligations, and it's funding for capital minimums and annual contributions is where we need the funds. Well, in that package that Mr. Newell sent out this weekend, it showed $2,028,000 worth of capital improvements that need to take place over the next five years. Some of them have already been approved and others haven't. So I just started looking at that, and I'm just going to go through, just breeze through them really quick here. The first one is a water distribution grid improvement. That's for unexpected opportunities to undertake repairs to improve the municipal water system. $150,000. The second was additional projects. It's fire hydrants and replacing valve boxes in streets when they do their paving projects. $200,000. Water service upgrade program, $75,000, to allow residents to upgrade their individual water services to their homes. Backflow prevention program, $15,000. That's for, if there's any commercial or I guess customers that don't have backflows already, I thought were required to have backflows. I know that fish processors all are required to have backflows in place. A raw water transmission main, $740,000, to replace a main up in Ketchikan Lakes Dam, or it was last done in 1957, and it seems like a little bit of a sizable project. We also need a new server for $100,000, because XP is no longer, Windows XP's no good anymore, so we got to get a new server. We need a new service truck to drive around to all these customers. That's $60,000. And then we need $688,000 for small and emergency infrastructure projects that may be identified by the water division staff. Well, my point is, is that, my point here is that none of these projects are specifically driven by the fish processors. This is, these projects that are out there for over the next five years are all driven by all the rate payers, and if that's why we need to raise rates, and that's why we need money is to fund these infrastructure replacement and costs, I mean, it's clear that it's not the seafood processors that are driving those costs. And the other thing is, you know, the idea that the rate payers have been subsidizing the fish processors, you know, that's just simply not true. We use a large amount of water, so we're a convenient target for revenue, but whether or not the seafood processors use that water, the costs for the utility are going to remain. All these costs that are in this packet that I received over the weekend, if all the seafood processors close down, you still have this $2,028,000 that you have in the budget for over the next five years that's going to have to take place. So I guess I'll summarize and say, you know, we hope that we can steer away from the meter of water rates and come up with something else and work with the city council and the city on it.
Thanks, Paul. All right. That's the last person signed up to talk. Is there anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? Somebody else? Anybody?
Hi, I'm Bob Weinstein, 831 Forest Avenue, and I'm here to speak on one of my favorite subjects over the years, including recently and for the past number of months, that's pedestrian safety. At our crosswalks, which I called the mayor to let him know I was going to come tonight, he said something was being initiated, whether it's tonight or in the near future, and I just wanted to add my voice to that. I think it's an important issue to the community, to residents and visitors alike, and the pedestrian safety, or lack thereof, at our crosswalks. And as you know, we have a lot of crosswalks across Tongass and elsewhere, and many of them are either dimly lit or otherwise hazardous to persons trying to cross the street. And just for a little history, a number of years ago, when I was still involved with the city, we got permission to install, which was at that time, I don't want to say the latest technology, but available technology, a couple impavement crossing lights. Worked reasonably well until a few winters went by and the snowplows came by and took them out. After that time, the LED lights that you see in other states and maybe in other communities now in Alaska, were, became available with the changes in technology, and actually, the city asked Alaska DOT to consider installation, or let the city install some, and the answer was, they're not approved in Alaska. Not, they're not approved in Alaska, but we will try to get approval if there's interest. It was just a flat no, sayonara essentially. And then several years ago, I noticed that DOT approved the installation of one in Juneau, meaning that the technology must have at long last been approved. You know, of course, they did, as far as I know, tell the city of Ketchikan, by the way, that question you asked five or six years ago, now it's approved and we'd like to talk to you about it. But in any case, today I called the Department of Transportation, Southeast Region, spoke with their traffic and safety engineer, and he advised that the devices, which have a technical name called rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RBFs, we're now approved in Alaska, he later sent me a sample of one. There's many designs, that's just one. Some have LEDs right at the bottom of a sign with the human being figure on it. The one that he sent happens to be one that the city of Sitka is installing on a state road. Furthermore, there's study after study after study available at the federal level in other states that show that these devices are very, very effective in alerting motorists that pedestrians are crossing. Improve pedestrian safety dramatically. So the DOT person, I told him I was going to come to the meeting and what my purpose was, and what I understood him to say is, if at some point the city of Ketchikan is interested, the process is to send a letter to the Southeast Director of DOT and initiate a process. A couple of scenarios might that occur. They might agree with locations that the city believes that such lights should be installed, such devices should be installed, and then the state would install them. They might agree and say, boy, we'd really love to, but as you know, our budget's been cut 50%, we'd be glad to let you guys install them. And then finally, they might not agree, in which case they have a process whereby you can say, we want to encroach on you right away and install these. And in fact, that's what Sitka did, a light that is being installed. Sitka had great community support, to the point that the Girl Scouts were all going out and listing support, to the point that the abducted state officials for Sitka had to get involved because DOT did not want to have a light at that location. And now that they have gone through that, they realize that that's a process available to communities. So in some, you know, I think it's a serious issue. We have multiple dangerous crossings. In my opinion, and this is not in priority order, it's more in geographic order, the shipyard, the hospital area, Curran Ear outside here, Thomas Basin in Tassu, maybe even by Valley Park School where the sidewalk ends on one side and kids have to cross by the rec center. But I hope that the city will, in the near future, if you're not actually taking action tonight, consider this and get the ball rolling and see what options you do have. And then the last thing is, I also sent you some of the state guidelines. And then the last thing is, I also sent you some of the state guidelines that they use, including has to be a forty mile an hour zone. He understood that inside City of Minnesota, forty mile an hour zone, but he did agree that the volume of traffic is extraordinarily high and equals on Eden Drive, for example, at some hours. So that...
Any questions for Bob?
Did they mention that I brought it up once when they were here?
Uh, no.
Yeah, I actually brought it up when they were here, because their study, when they were showing us their current, yeah, so I sent an email, but I never really heard anything back, so, but I guess maybe it needs to come from you, Luke.
From the council.
Well, yeah, I think if the council gives appropriate direction, if you're interested in doing it, but clearly, and we see it day in and night out, I mean, these lights are good in the daytime too, because they'll signal, but certainly at night, they give at a distance a motorist warning that somebody is trying to cross the street.
So they, they said forty-five mile an hour, huh?
Forty. If you look at that, that's one of the criteria, but I don't think, it's not enough, there's another handout that I gave.
Oh, because in, when I was in Washington...
That says warning beacon.
Yeah, because when I was in Washington, I saw them in Shalane, and they were in like, like areas like downtown like we have.
Right.
Where they have a lot of tourism in the summer. And so you see it a mile away before that there's somebody walking.
Right. I think DO, these are not federal guidelines, these are something that DOT adopted, and obviously, if they were rigid or intend to be rigid on the forty mile an hour, they would never approve any of the city of Ketchikan.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Bob.
You know, it's probably fairly convenient, we've got two spots at least, one at the bottom of White Cliff and one right here that we already have power at, because we had the before-mentioned lights in the street, so we may be able to reutilize that. But I guess one of my questions is with the new curb bulbs that are being put in, I know it's on a fast track and it's probably going to be pouring concrete here pretty soon, but is there any benefit if we put some conduit in those places and recognize that we may put a lot of light there at some point?
Well, I'm the last person to advise you on design. I would assume you can come from above on some of these, I really don't know, but it might be a question that somebody asks.
Most of them are solar anymore.
I don't know the answer.
Thanks, Bob. All right, that brings us to, anybody else? Kathleen?
Hello, I am Kathleen Litt, I'm the Director of the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council, and I wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been up to. I'm not going to go chronologically though, because our artist for our March exhibit is setting up his exhibit right now, so I'm going to start with him, and it is Nick Bowman.
Hi. Nick Bowman, I'm doing a photo show of dogs in Ketchikan. I've been working on it for about a year. The gallery opening is at 5:00 PM tomorrow on Saturday at noon, I'm doing a workshop. If you have a camera or an iPhone or something, come on down, learn how to take pictures of your dog. We'll have dogs there, so don't bring any dogs.
Don't bring any tonight.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's a lot of fun. A pretty wide range of people who have been involved, obviously Angie Tiger and her Iditarod team. Got Booker, the retired drug dog, he's kind of front and center in the whole thing, so that'll be fun. And, yeah, Main Street Gallery, March third to the thirty-first.
Do you have the mayor's dog?
The mayor's dog? Which dog?
Which mayor?
I thought so. I thought so. Thanks, Nick. Any questions for Nick? Kathleen, do you have anything else?
Yes, I, just to let you know how Nick actually got a show, we do do gallery applications for our season, which is September through July, and those applications are due March first every year. And we have a selection process that's pretty competitive, and it is a artist development opportunity. So Nick put in an application, and he was selected for this exhibit, and he's been putting up pieces, we've already seen them, they're very wonderful and compelling, and I really think you would enjoy the exhibit. I highly, highly, strongly, strongly encourage you to come and check it out. Also, I wanted to tell you what we've been up to, mostly the wearable art show, which happened at the beginning of February. The attendance there, we had about fifty-one artists that participated in the evening shows, and they brought with them about fifty-six models in the afternoon show that increased by three school groups with fifty-three additional student artists. And then we had about seventy-eight volunteers, so each performance about, it could get up to thirty volunteers a night. So about-ish, five fifty a performance, and then you add another fifty for the afternoon show. So up to six hundred people that come up to Ted Ferry for that performance each night. So it was a total success, sellout every night. It is our fundraiser, and that, those funds do sustain us until Blueberry, so it is a very big deal, and it is a place where we are able to, to make it to the next event. The gallery then exhibits wearable art show pieces for the month of February, and the way they are selected is by the gallery committee, who picks pieces that are made of extraordinary materials or that are very intricate, that you may not understand from the runway from a distance, or they're just especially beautiful. So we had about eighteen pieces in the gallery that we had on exhibit, eighteen artists showing their pieces, and that was through the month of February. So the gallery attendance in the month of February was three hundred and forty-seven people, and that included seventy-eight of the librarians that came for the librarian convention over the past weekend, and they were delighted to see what Ketchikan does and how extraordinary our wearable artists are. They were to a, to a librarian astounded. And I should mention also, at the wearable art show, Coast Alaska's general managers were in town, and they were also at the wearable art show, and they also were very impressed with the artists of our community. So a couple different opportunities for people outside of Ketchikan to admire Ketchikan's artists. Also in February, our Arts on Court series, which is an opportunity for adults to learn a variety of artists, art, artistic mediums, we had Dave Rubin teaching oil painting, so we did an Arts on Court class, we had twenty-five people attend that, and then he did an all-day class this past Saturday, nineteen people came, and that was a more intense class on how to use oil painting, and that, that was really awesome, people really enjoyed that. Recently, we just won the Chinook Award, honored by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. We were totally surprised to win this award, but the award is for economic development in the community, and we very much appreciated this award by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, being aware of, of the value of arts activities in our community and how crucial they are to our economic impact and our quality of life. So we were very honored to, to win that. I also invite all of you to attend our annual meeting, the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council's annual meeting. We will hold it March fifteenth at the Main Street Gallery at 5:30 PM. This is our chance to brag about what we've been doing all year, to show our financials, to let you find out who our new officers are, who have our board, and to meet and chat with the board and the staff. So please join us, we're going to have a little bit of a party, we're going to have a slideshow of our events, and there should be really good food. So I invite you all to attend, that's March fifteenth. Do you have any questions?
How'd the octopus do on the bus?
You know, we couldn't fit on the bus.
I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, the bait ball just didn't, and the bus driver was not amused.
I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
Nice try, though.
Yeah.
I liked your pictures.
Good, thank you, Kathleen.
You bet.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to address the council tonight?
Wish I was there.
See, and that, let's move on into agenda, we're at the consent agenda. I'd like to add six A one on the, what do you call it, our new performing down there on the dock. Six A two on the segways, and then six A six, appointments to commissions and boards. That's all I got. Guess Dick.
Yeah, I object to six A two.
Okay, we'll cancel that one and do with one and six. All right, now, do we have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, I move the consent second.
Madam clerk, can you read items?
Approval admittance, regular city council meeting, February sixth, two thousand seventeen. Liquor license renewals for the BPO Elks Lodge number fourteen twenty-nine and Chico's Mexican Restaurant, exempting the procurement of the annual software maintenance agreement for the First City Libraries Consortium from the competitive bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Cersei Dynex. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six fifty-six, in opposition to an increase to the studded tire tax. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six fifty-seven, supporting Senate Bill Seven, an act establishing a museum construction grant program in the Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development. Ordinance number seventeen eighteen forty, adding a new section thirteen point oh nine point oh three five to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, entitled program for performing artists in second reading, and appointments to boards and commissions, and that's for the museum advisory board.
All right, anybody have any questions on anything?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I still think we should, maybe with the weather being the way, just invite Snyder Geisler to come down from Fairbanks to see our roads here and see that the studded tires are not, you know, option.
Call the roll, please.
Keith?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six and up, that brings us down to six A two, ordinance seventeen eighteen thirty-nine, adding a new chapter ten eighteen to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, electric personal assistant mobile devices, second reading. Dick?
Yeah, Your Honor? You want me to make a motion to?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I move the city council approval in second. Reading ordinance number seventeen eighteen thirty-nine, adding chapter ten eighteen to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, entitled electric personal assisted mobility devices and establishment of second reading. Second.
Who can second it?
Okay, I'll try this one more time, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I object to section ten eighteen zero thirty, because I don't think it's well thought out, I don't think we can enforce it, and I don't think we got the people to deal with it. And I won't, I can't tell you how many people might need to use it or want to use it, but I, I, I would just think we ought to take that section clear out of it, and I will make the motion to do such.
Now, which section are you talking about?
Uh, that's the one, it's the one with limited use by disabled personnel for mobility purposes.
Okay.
I mean, I, there's other opportunities for them to use it besides the machine like that thing there. But anyway, I moved, I moved to remove the, that section.
Okay, there was a motion, amendment made to, but we haven't had it second yet, we removed ten...
I'll second it for discussion, please.
Okay. Okay, we're talking about ten eighteen zero three zero. Anybody else have a comment? Go ahead, Jenny Lee.
I would say, just taking this out could be a clear violation of ADA law.
Okay.
Keith might be able to answer that, if he knows, but he doesn't know what we're talking about, so.
Just answer anyway, it's our time.
Illegal aid device.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I see a lot of this stuff in here, of course, like Councilman Ku said, how we enforce it's going to be the issue. Our regulations to make sure that somebody maybe isn't abusing that. I think the one that I have a problem with is item three, where they can give verbal representation. I think that if you have one of those for handicap needs, that you need to have the correct documentation in regards to that, and it could be as much as card, sticker, or something with the serial number of the rig, however, however that may happen. They may have a licensing system through the police department here where they can put a sticker on or something like, I don't know how we do that, but I think just a verbal representation leaves it too vague and too open in regards to that. I'm not too sure, though, that if we take the whole thing out, it doesn't leave us with any enforcement policies.
Well, I understand where Dick's coming from, I just, I mean, the only time it's going to become a problem is somebody starts doing a tour with these, and I think that would, I just don't, I mean, that's a hell of an investment, so I just don't, I'd rather like to see the problem come before we do anything.
The other comment too is under section C of that thing, it says we'll allow two of them. They got to be behind each other, but all of a sudden, what have we got going? There's just that, I don't, I have a problem with the people using them, but I just don't think we, we're set up and have it well thought out enough to, to manage it and enforce it and whatever have you.
Mitch, did you have a comment?
Well, in, in response to Councilmember Severson, the B three and the verbal representation, I mean, I'd be the first to agree that it's, has a potential to be problematic. The issue, though, however, is that that's essentially verbatim from the ADA regulation or guidance of what you got to do. I'm not writing on a clean piece of paper, I guess, is my main point.
In other words, as a disabled person, it's not like we walk around with a card that says we're legally disabled, so, however, like I have a plaque on my car, and I get what Kuss is saying, it seems like there's a lot of people who, who seem to be quite capable, but most, some, but most disabilities are invisible. Even mine, to most people, they don't see me as disabled. I, this last month, I've been yelled at three times for parking a handicap spot. So it's...
Those were by your cousin, so.
Yeah.
For a hundred bucks, I'll make you a card.
Yeah.
All right, call the roll on the amendment, please.
Gage?
No.
No. Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Kuyfer?
No.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Okay, that fails three to four. We have the main motion, call the roll, please.
So, that was on his amendment.
That was on the main.
It can be three or fours, it's only six things, but so, the past four, okay, two, two.
Kuyfer?
So it's the main motion?
Main motion.
Uh, yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
And Kuss?
No.
Okay, that passes five to one, and that was number two.
Is it number forty-two?
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to number three, rejecting bid proposals for contract seventeen oh two, hole-in-the-wall breakwater upgrades, and directing staff to issue an invitation for bids for the replacement of the hole-in-the-wall harbor breakwater based on draft plans and specifications determined appropriate by the city council, which the ones that they're based on in the motion is what the harbor advisory board came up with, which I'm really satisfied with, in case you're wondering what those were. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council to reject all bids, proposals for contract number seventeen dash oh two, hole-in-the-wall harbor floating breakwater upgrades, and direct staff to issue a new invitation for bids for the replacement of the hole-in-the-wall harbor floating breakwater as detailed in the draft plans and specifications provided by the ports and harbors director dated February twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, and/or as modified by the city council.
Second.
Who can second? Anybody have any comments? Dick?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit disappointed in a way. We do have some specs in this thing, which, well, first we need to dispense with what we did and, and rebid it, but the specs still bother me, because all the comments that I've heard is bigger is better. And I'm going to use two of them, and I, there's nobody standing here, I don't think, except maybe one, but the fire station's bigger and better, and the library's bigger and better, and it costs us a hell of a lot of money. Now, this is not a lot of money, but still, we need some engineering aspects about this thing, rather than just saying bigger is better, and I'll leave it at that. What we're doing is we're going after the biggest thing going.
Anybody else? Jenny Lee?
This is by open water, I mean.
Yeah, the water, the wind comes into...
From...
Well, it's in George Inlet.
It's facing up George Inlet, but the weather patterns cause the way.
Yeah, somewhere.
Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
No.
This is by open water, right?
Yeah, the water, the wind comes into.
From?
Well, it's in George Inlet.
It's facing up George Inlet, but the weather patterns cause the way.
Yeah, somewhere.
Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kayfer?
No.
Kooz?
No.
Seabertson?
Yes.
Was that four?
Four to two.
Four to two. Last count. Okay, that passes and brings us down.
You forgot to ask me.
I already got automatically marked.
No.
Are you voting now?
Yeah.
Chair, um, vote yes. Okay, three, three, close. All right, that brings us to number four, additional Tedbury Center parking capacity. We brought that up at another meeting ago. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council direct staff to take such action regarding the development of additional parking at and/or access to the Tedbury Civic Center as determined appropriate by council.
Second.
Who did second it? Judy, you wanna start off?
Well, I had asked for, um, you know, what the potential cost of developing that extra lot was. Um, and then after talking to some folks about that, I don't know that that even really ends up solving the problem because people are then walking in the dark and gravel and there's all kinds of things that go along with that. Um, I was hoping that there'd be some easy way that, um, you know, we could help solve the problem, but I think the easiest way is to have the organization build it into their cost, you know? I mean, at the end of the day.
Yeah, but then we're.
Right, Dave.
But then we're penalizing them for something that was a, for a situation we caused. Or, or they could stop using our facility, which in the long run is worse for us. You know, the, yeah, I'm, I'm still not convinced that, that, you know, that paying a few thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a year for buses is, it's not the, it's not the most expensive option. I mean, everything else is a more expensive option.
It's gonna come down to a matter of consistency and we're gonna be revisiting this over and over again as we have new groups come up and ask us why they aren't included in the transportation that's gifted to these organizations. Especially, I, I agree with Judy, it should be built in, especially people that are selling tickets. They have the opportunity to con, control that to some extent.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I agree, and I definitely don't want to take on the responsibility of the insurance, the properties and, and other items that may go onto this, and then we don't have any guarantee. We can gravel it up and then they build a building on it. Um, but I, I, I a little bit disagree with Dave in the fact that, uh, it's a situation we created. We put a, a facility up there, we put parking in, uh, not knowing, of course, what that could grow to. Um, but there are other facilities in the community that have the same problem. The high school, for instance, uh, they have two events there and you're parking down on Third Avenue, just the way it happens. Um, and I'm, I'm sure there's other places when you're downtown on the Fourth of July, you don't find places to park. I mean, you, you gotta figure out if you're gonna walk the town or, and walk home or if you're gonna go down there and drive around for an hour and try to figure it out. Um, so I, I, I agree with Judy in, in the fact that, uh, this probably isn't the best option and to build it into the rates.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I've gotta agree also that fixing up that lot up there is probably not the best option and takes on responsibility, but, uh, I, like I said last week, I, I think that, uh, the people proposing the use, they know what it's gonna be and they just need to provide for the service that they're gonna get and part of the gain. And, and we shouldn't be in, we shouldn't be in the transportation business.
Anybody else?
I was, obviously, I, I can count no's to say, but the reality is, keep in mind, that's our facility. We want it to make money.
Right, no, I.
The minute it doesn't make money, we're paying a lot more to keep it open. So, you know, it's all, I'm gonna say it's, it's all up to the groups. Let them decide. If they decide to go elsewhere or something else opens up, then we are really screwed. So, just keep it on.
Jenny Lee?
And, and granted, it's only a couple people ask, but everybody's open to ask for, um, this transportation, right? So it's, it's just that.
And the community grants, you mean?
No, no, the, um, just.
The two events that we provide.
The two events that usually ask are the two largest events we have in the community. And they, and again, um, um, they built the building knowing they didn't have adequate parking. The other thing is we need to consider is that it is a, um, an economic value to this community. And I think it shows commerce that we're actually, that we work with our, um, groups. And it's not that I think, I mean, it'd be nice if we could accommodate every program, but even being in the cabaret, we don't, we don't bring in the same amount of people, but we also don't set it up the same way. Um, we have tables and they just, that wearable art show draws way more people and it draws people from other communities. So they're staying up there. They're getting hotels, they're coming in from Prince Rupert, there were people from Sidka, there were people from Prince, uh, Juno and, um, Petersburg, and I even know somebody that came down from Anchorage. Um, so it's, it's bringing other people into our community who are spending money to stay here and to come to that show.
Okay, well, um, I guess one of the directions, I, myself, I, for those two events, I had no problem supporting it. Some kind of bus, like nothing else, even if anybody else asked. Um, those are the biggies. Um, now, so is there, it doesn't seem to be any interest in then in putting the five thousand into that other spot to make thirty-eight more spaces. I counted four, I think, if they weren't interested. So I guess management, you've got your direction.
I guess I would love.
Yeah, Dave.
I'd be curious, is there any interest, I doubt it, but is there, is there any interest in trying to make the property owner up there provide what they were supposed to provide? You know, we have a, we have a signed agreement saying we're gonna do it, and they're clearly not doing it at certain times of the year. So do we want to try to enforce that? I don't know.
What agreement?
Carl.
Talking about the agreements between the city and Cape Fox. I reviewed those agreements a couple of years ago. And as I recall, the language says that the responsibility of the tram rests with Cape Fox, but there's not language in there that necessarily compels them to maintain a, a, a level of maintenance or a level of operation. I certainly can go back and.
Didn't we give them an easement to put the tram in?
I believe they gave, they were reciprocal easements. We gave them an easement to put the tram in. They gave us an easement for access through the lobby to, to, to the Civic Center. I certainly can review those again, but it wouldn't hurt.
You know, the, the other thing that, even looking at that point, the amount of money that Cape Fox, um, draws in from the people who go to the shows, it's, so they go up there and have dinner before they go to their show. Um, they'd be losing that out too, if we, if, if all those people decided to move and go someplace else and do their show. I'm just saying.
Right, Carl.
In fairness to Cape Fox, you know, they are expending funds in a multiple phase effort to, to get the tram back in operational order. It's not like they're not doing anything. I want not anybody to have that, that, that idea.
Well, if anybody's ever interested in just providing buses for those two events, I'd be in support of that. But I think we'll move on. There's nothing, yes, sir?
I represent Cape Fox.
Okay, pull it up.
The council know that we are currently at about a half million dollars into that tram in the last twelve months.
Wow.
So that is where we are at. The tram will go down April first and it'll take another month to complete the second phase of renovations. And at that point, you know, we do charge in the summertime for tours and we'll charge for lodging as well.
Thank you very much.
To recoup those costs, so, okay? But we're, we're hoping at the end of April that tram is operational and stayed operational. Um, it's a custom-made system. It's not easy to, to fabricate. We've, uh, put everything new in and we ran into some challenges along the way, so. But, uh, we do hope that it'll be back up and running, but we have invested over half a million dollars into that as of right now.
Thanks for coming on the meeting, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, um, does somebody else have something else? We're gonna move on to, where am I? Ah, number five, management and development of water and wastewater rates. Judy, do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council direct staff to take such actions regarding modifying the wastewater and water utility rate structure determined appropriate by the city council.
Second.
Who did second it? Bob, did you have one of those ideas best hit you or?
Well, if, if you go through the memo that was, um, presented, they had a, a couple scenarios. And one is a fixed rate and one is over a three-year period and one is a metered rate over a three-year period. And the intent is to bring those commercial rates, the, the fish processor rate, up to what they call market value, which is comparable with Wrangle, Petersburg, Juno, Sidka and, and other communities in southeast Alaska. Um, and, you know, you gotta look at this, this water and the usage of water similar to what you use your electricity. The guy closest to the plant doesn't get his electricity for less than the guy all the way out the end of the road because the costs are in maintaining the entire utility and the rates have to reflect that. And it's the same way with the water, where the fish processors may not be the, uh, driver of the, uh, capital projects we have. The fact that we own a water treatment system and we have distribution and we have maintenance, um, there are times when we're maintaining the lines that supply water to those guys. But you gotta pay for the whole utility. You can't just pick and choose. Um, I know that in the report, they, they probably, you know, they talked about getting away from the rate structure right now, the, uh, metered rate and looking at using fixed rates to get us to where we need to be in three years, which is the market value throughout southeast, what, what other communities are doing. Other communities are on metered rates for their fish processing. And through the process, there was some conservation and there was some changes. Um, but the reality is that, uh, it costs the utilities X number of dollars to keep that operation running and you have to fund it. When you look at the, and what we're talking about is rate classes, the residential rates in Ketchikan, I believe, and we've seen that in the last report, are paying more than their fair share in regards to the gallons that they use or the, the services that they use. And so we have this, this issue with the fish processors that been going on for years and years and years. And I appreciate the fact that they're here in our community and they provide jobs and, and they do that. But they know exactly how much it costs to put that fish in a can, what they have to charge for it. And they're not gonna do it at a loss. And I think that's where we are with our utilities. We gotta be able to cover the costs of operating the utility, not just operating the utility to the benefit of an individual business or person, but the utility that supplies everybody with water. When we have a regulation come down that we have to comply with, it's not just because we gotta comply for, for one industry, it's we have to do it for the whole community. So I'm in favor of, uh, there's two that we can discuss, I think, but if you go through the, um, the memo on page four and on page five, there's two that are listed. One is moving to a metered rate, um, and increasing it, uh, in three years in increments of, um, the seventy cents, eighty-five cents, and then up to ninety cents, which would, um, increase them from a hundred and thirty-seven thousand to three hundred and thirty-four thousand for, per year, for the waters that they're using. The other one that was suggested is to use a three-year strategy and increase the current seafood processor rate by thirty-five percent per year, and that again would bring us up to the same amount. The difference is if we use the metered rates, Phillips would pay the majority of the cost, whereas potentially the other two processors, because they're not here year-round, would see reductions. Um, so then you talk about fairness, what, what, what is the better way to do that? So I guess those are the two that I would suggest that we have a discussion about in moving forward with, um, uh, the rate structure in regards to, uh, the volume base that we're using out of the fish processors. And it's not just about fish processors. We also have, we're gonna start looking at the largest ten commercial users that we have and, and do similar types of adjustments because it, I think it has to happen throughout the community and we gotta treat everybody fairly and the different rate classes have to be equitable in, in providing those funds to the community.
So you're looking at the thirty-five percent instead of eleven percent?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Is, are we, were you including the cruise lines when they're getting one?
That is a water rate.
It's a different water rate. Do we know what's due?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, um, that came at a later date and I don't know if John's here, but, um, yeah, John is here. We provided a rate that we're covering our costs and making money in regards to supplying water to the cruise ships. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
You've been on top of that one.
The rate has been adjusted, yeah.
Anybody else's input? Dick?
Well, probably just, I know right now we seem to be focusing on the fish processors, but I, I think if we don't throw their other things into this, like those other commercial operators and then, and I'm gonna use the red men across the hall here where they're paying probably a hundred times what they should be paying for the size of the water, amount of water they use and the size of the line. And we need to, we need to do this comprehensively and not a piece at a time. And right now I see this, we're focused on getting more money by the ones we think are low. And I don't disagree that they're not low with, low, but, uh, and I know the feedback I'm getting is the, the, uh, residential people don't like another five and a half percent either. I mean, if you tag that five and a half percent on to six percent for the sewer and water, that means your water bill and sewer bill is gonna go up twelve dollars. Am I, again, and so I, you know, we need to do something, but I'd still like for us to be a little more comprehensive about it and, and maybe one of these two, three-year strategies is, is good on the fish processors, but somebody, the, the other people are involved also and we're tending to close our eyes to it.
It's my understanding that previous councils had given the seafood processors three years with no change. Is that correct?
No, eight percent each year.
Eight percent, eight percent per year?
The same, the same raise that was, uh, applied to the residential customers and the commercial customers was across the board.
And it still ended up forty-eight percent of the water used in town by the seafood processors paying four point six percent of the cost. That is the definition of a subsidy. So instead of trying to address everything comprehensively, I think maybe it's time to take a step and start and not wait any longer and look for a rate that is more equitable for the city that the processors can wrap their heads around and find a way to work into their business models going forward. And then address other rate classes later, but not wait.
Anybody else? Dick?
Well, and let me continue to, to talk about that not waiting. To me, if we couldn't have some rates proposed to us for those other things by next meeting, I'd be surprised. I think we could all sit down and take a look at that and, and have it done, but, and I'm not saying take this study and kick it down the road another six months. That's stupid. We've already kicked that study down the road two years. And, and if we can't come up with some, some equitable adjustments on those other commercial users and some of the, I don't know if we wanna call them non-commercial users, but I can't believe we can't do it. I just, just don't believe it.
Judy?
Um, well, I support the first three-year strategy, um, increasing the seafood processors rates by thirty-five percent. I think that, um, I know when I came on council, there was a, an attitude that we would give them the three years, that they would make the changes. They told us they would make some changes. They would work towards that. Um, and I haven't seen that. And I think that, um, you know, the residential rate payers are tired of that. They're tired of paying for it. And I had many, many calls about this. And I think that there has to be some equity. And, uh, the only way to do that, I think, is to start slowly making it a little more equitable. And I think that's how we do it.
Bob and then Dick?
Yeah, I wanna make sure that everybody fully understands this is not anything, um, you know, against any particular class. And, and again, I fully appreciate our fish processors in this community. They've been here for years. They've been the backbone of, part of the three legs of our economy and, and we should keep that. and, and we should keep that in the consideration. But what I'm looking at is, is a reasonable or fairness across the classes of, of users. And we are by no means looking at bringing them up to the suggested hundred percent of the cost, which would have been, what, a million bucks or something like that, what we're talking about. We're not going there. That would be too detrimental to that industry, it would be unfair. But I do think that starting to move them in a direction to, to help out with the deficit that we've been running year after year in the, in the department is important and we have a responsibility to do that. So I guess I would speak within the, I, I think I would agree with Judy on the thirty-five.
All right. Dick?
Yeah, now, we're looking at that one three-year strategy that talks about thirty-five percent and, and staff's report there, they're also saying that everybody else gets five and a half. Are we throwing that into pot, too?
We haven't discussed that one yet.
That we haven't talked about. I mean, if we're gonna give these, are we gonna give management direction to bring us back in ordinance on that thirty-five percent?
Any changes you direct us to do, we'll have to come back.
Yes, right. I just wonder if there's four members wanting to go that direction or not, since that's what I've been hearing.
Yes.
Mark, are you, okay?
You want hands?
Hands.
I got a hand.
Dick?
Let's work on the water rates. Let's move forward with that.
Well, I got three hands. We have four hands to move on that thirty-five. Hello, Dick?
Well, we're gonna have to do the rates anyway. I mean, it says in the summary.
To move it along, I'll give you the fourth one, just to move it along.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that's where we're gonna be.
Okay. But he has to bring us back in ordinance.
Yes.
So on the, the other classes, what does that entail exactly?
What's that?
Is that five point five percent for residential, too, up here, or did I read that wrong?
That's what we're recommending.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it, but we can talk.
The only thing that we've suggested so far is.
Thirty-five percent?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We can continue on, go ahead, Carl.
So I, I'm understanding this, what you're discussing right now is thirty-five percent just for the processors.
That's where we're at right now, yeah. We'll take up the discussion on the rest of those.
But when we bring that ordinance back, I'd like to take up, I don't know how soon you guys, I'd like to take up the discussion for our top ten users.
Exactly.
So we're dealing with all.
If that's council direction, we can incorporate that as well.
I don't know which direction we'll go.
That would mean it would be across the, for those.
I don't know, that's on.
Well, and, and as we, I agree with you, Lou, we need to take up that as a discussion and we need to take up, and I, I wanna go back to these, some of these small users with big lines that don't use a thousand gallons a month and they're paying several hundred dollars a month for water that they never use. We, we need to pull, we need to make that equitable and there's several of them in town. That discussion needs to be there also. If I had, and if I had my preference, I would, I would say that we ought to give any residential customer an option if they wanna install their own meter that certified that they go on a metered rate and that don't cost the city a dime. But I would think that staffs don't like that.
Well, we'd have to dream up a metered rate. Let's start one thing at a time.
Yeah.
It's taking us long enough to get this far.
The top ten users, can we look at that first?
Yeah.
And then take it from there, work at the first top, the top ten users.
As long as we don't take ten years to do the rest of it.
Well, no, that's the problem, right?
Well, we can bring it back next meeting. Can you do that, Carl?
For the top ten users, we should be able to do those calculations and have an ordinance.
And then we'll just keep moving forward till we make a decision.
Yep. And, and just in response to the other comments that have been made, Councilmember Cruz, I don't disagree, right? But once you get below the top ten users, you're getting into very complex calculations for individual users. And I don't have a consultant anymore to help us with that. You terminated the, the contract with FCS and I understand that. But when you get into that complex of a rate analysis, I don't have the staff to do that in-house, I just don't. Bob, I'll defer view if you wanna make additional.
I agree.
Well, let's, come on up, Bob.
The model that FCS put together with the balanced model that took into account all of the rate classes, when you start picking and choosing and building up the other aspect of the, of the model, what happens is you're not really sure how much revenue you're gonna generate. So even changes, we're talking about making now, could offset the balance because the model concerned that the processors would pay a certain rate for the adjunct, if the other user classes that serve that revenue stream was coming in. Though it's not, well, that means if, if the other user classes are gonna be in topic and the revenue may, may not materialize. So I, I understand what Councilmember Cruz is talking about, but when you start going in and picking and choosing, you upset that downward and it's hard to determine what the revenue stream's gonna be. Last thing I wanna do, do a, a rate structure that exhausts the last revenue and we're building a balanced model.
Well, I, Mayor, if I'm.
Yeah.
I, I sort of disagree because I don't think we're talking about that many people and that much cash, but to the people that's affected, it's, it's a bunch. And as we know, we've ever said, we've all sat around here before, we either take a straight percentage or we don't disagree, or we disagree with, we lower it. And we still come out on the end, so we just need a point to start with and I think this, this council can sit down and make a decision and still come up with the total number of dollars of the revenue stream that we need. But consultants just, anyway.
Well, let's start with this top ten and see where we go and we'll work from there. Let's just get one thing done. Thanks, Bob. Carl, you got direction?
I do on water, I know what I'm gonna say is probably a losing cause, but if you go back to the graphs earlier in the report, and you look at the capital improvement plans that we presented over five years, water's a problem in and of itself, but we've had a greater problem on the wastewater side.
I understand, Carl.
And I just wanna point that out.
If we're gonna do anything with that, we're gonna have to pick out a couple of projects and we're gonna have to go to the voters for a bond.
Mr. Mayor, we just went to the voters for a bond and we haven't expended that bond yet and you have a need to increase rates and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right. We've given direction to management, let's move on to item seven, A1, ordinance seventeen eighteen forty-two, repealing section nine fifty-four oh four C, or E of the Ketchikan municipal code entitled limitation of off-premise solicitation activity and mending section nine fifty-four oh seven B entitled fine schedule, first reading. If somebody can make a motion, I had a question on it.
Your Honor, I move the city council to approve the first reading, ordinance number seventeen dash eighteen forty-two, repealing subsection nine dash fifty-four dash zero four zero E of the Ketchikan municipal code entitled restrictions on off-premises solicitation activity and mending subsection nine point five four point zero seven zero B of the Ketchikan municipal code entitled fine schedule and establishing effective date.
Second.
Mitch? Can I bug you for a minute? So is this our new fine schedule for our hawking and barking?
The fine schedule's the, the same, Your Honor, I think you were meeting with borough staff for a couple of discussions having to do with the fact that subsection B may not have been clear and it probably wasn't clear unless you're the lawyer and I don't wish that on everybody, so it seemed to me that we set out some concrete examples that would be of assistance.
My question also was, you know, we also talked about, you know, they're going to get, they're not getting the conditional use permit anymore, they just get that zoning thing. And I talked to Dave and Dave said, yeah, we can pull their zoning anytime. And do we have, you know, I said, well, Dave, how many times are we gonna let them? He goes, oh, we'll just, they get a ticket once, we can jerk it or whatever. But we really don't have anything defined on that unless I haven't seen anything and you know something about it.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to. What, what the changes being made here.
Well, I understand, I'm just wondering where, if, do we have any policy or anything written, like, let's say, um, guy's down there on the corner in one of the stores and let's say he gets three or four tickets. When do we have a, I mean, they should know when they're gonna get cut, how they're gonna be at, um, we're gonna go to the borough and get their zoning permit pulled so they can't sell there anymore. I think that's missing somewhere.
Well, that would be a borough question, I believe.
Well, they didn't want to get, um, you know, they're trying to get out of the enforcement of this, so I thought we should have some kind of, I mean, we set a, then we're just going back to the borough asking, begging them to pull the thing.
But what, what I think you're asking about, and we don't have.
The power to do it.
Now, well, we don't have anything on the books about it now.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, where do we put something on the books and where do we do this? Because I think these guys, before they get started this season, need, yeah, here's the finesc, structure, but hey, if you're, you know, hit three times, we're gonna go to the borough to get your zoning approved so you don't, can't.
I'd be talking about a couple of different things.
Okay.
I don't know what the borough may want or expect as far as its zoning permit. All I do know is that they're in the process of doing away with the CMP process for these type of operations. That was the, what the discussion was about at the meeting I was at.
Correct.
And so that subsection in there isn't gonna mean anything. It's also my understanding that those operations that were grandfathered really were all on private property anyway.
Yep.
So that ordinance sort of became moot as the rest of the provisions evolved.
So I.
I don't have a handle, the borough mayor may not do, the other aspect to look at, but I don't see us having it in place and being able to administer anything, just to have a city permit process. But if we were to go down that route and staff it, I, we're probably just too close to the season to get that on the books and get it operational.
Well, I don't, I don't, I wanna get this started and I wanna, I'm gonna just keep working to, if we put the book, it gets on the books halfway through the season, we have to, I think, in this agreement with, we're working with in the borough, is we gotta come up with something where, you know, if we keep giving these fines, I guess, you know, they'll get three, four and it'll get up to six hundred dollars each time, which is aggressive, I mean, would probably inspire them to be better, but I still think we're going to need where we can go and say, hey, we need to pull this guy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Your Honor, I just am not confident enough with the borough process or what it might take or if we need to look at our own.
That's, I'll wait till Dave gets back, 'cause I talked to him about it and, yeah, I guess he's not around.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Mitch.
Just out of curiosity, are they paying their fines?
Well, if it's Mitch on the fine payment, is the question?
Uh, as far as I know, you know, I, I don't, I don't see other case, I think a number of them were mailed in, uh, a number of them, they agreed to pay, some of them, uh, some of them to the state first, you know, are there scofflaws out there that are gonna wait till it goes to collection? I suspect that could hold the case, I just don't know. But they're being imposed.
Dick?
Yeah, Mitch, I, two questions. One, on section one, you were repealing, what are we repealing?
It was basically, Councilmember Cruz, it was a grandfather provision for the operations that had the borough permits.
Okay.
The borough was not gonna have those permits, wanted to get it cleaned up before they're done with their process, but, and Mayor Williams was more familiar with the particular operations involved, but what he explained to me is that he didn't really need that grandfather provision because as the ordinance evolved, we exempted trying to control what happened, something on private property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then the other question is like the mayor was asking about, how do we get rid of something if it's a problem and it looked, would it seem to me like it would be, I know it's not that simple, but add something to these, this penalty section that says after you do this in twelve months, we're gonna go to the borough and recommend you get kicked out?
Well, that's, that's where there's a gap in, in my knowledge, if we can go to the borough under what they have existing and complain and hope that they kick them out, that could be one avenue. If that is available or is, doesn't work out or inadequate, we would all, you know, committing a city permit and then there'd be a permit that we can revoke and put a complete shutdown of the operation instead of finding, finding, finding.
Well, we need to find out what.
Yeah, I'll get with Dave and, 'cause we've talked about it, I just didn't know if this was the place to put it or not, so.
It would seem like we'd have to say something, though.
Yeah, you know, rather not wait for the borough to take action on something, because, you know.
I might be really old.
They're too busy trying to stop shop every five, five.
Let's call the roll.
We said that.
Cruz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seerutson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Okay, um, Gage is, I mean, Gage is here. Julie isn't here and not on the phone, so this is her item, so I'm going to pull the next two items, I didn't even think about it that earlier, until she's here at the next meeting, hopefully.
She wanted these presented, the two that are on here, two of the three were from quality provisions and she wanted these to be addressed, can we do that?
Yeah, we can. Discussion removing senior sales tax exemption from purchase alcohol, cigarettes, and marijuana. Anybody else who's on that committee? Mark, take it away. What happened?
Well, it was referred back to us for discussion, so I'll start the discussion. Obviously, we're gonna have a lot of talks about tight budgets and tight fiscal times, but I just can't be in support of any movement that would place a greater tax burden on seniors.
I agree.
That's.
Anybody else?
Yes, we're all seniors.
Bob?
Well, I, I think the question there, though, is necessity. And these are, I guess, some people may think they're necessary.
Yeah, I have a lot of people who, if I come next week and you say that, they'll go, yeah.
But I, I, it probably wasn't the original intent of the fact, you know, and I know that there are other communities, we don't always wanna follow them, but they've reduced it to the point where it's for housing, food, and fuel, I believe. And there is a certain amount of abuse in the use of that because the way it's written is you're supposed to use it for yourself and your spouse and not be buying other items or paying for other people's type stuff. I think it's, it's worth a discussion, 'cause again, I don't think they're what you would call necessities.
Well, do we have four people interested in moving this farther with a, an ordinance to talk about?
Before we do that, I'm just curious, what was the discussion from the borough for that, that part they were just, they sound like they're gonna take it back and, and see if there was, 'cause there's, there's no point in us doing this, but they are, yes. There's no point in us doing it, they're, they're.
Because it goes to them, right?
Dick?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I missed the cooperation committee meeting, so I don't know what, what was available to us, even how much money we would gain, 'cause I have a feeling the other body was looking for something they could gain. But whatever the discussion is, to me, everybody pays tax on marijuana, I don't care who you are.
Here, Kelly?
Living in another community, actually, I was surprised that we actually have an exemption because, um, in Kenai, they don't have, for those, those particular items, you pay, you pay tax on them regardless of age. So I mean, so I was just sort of, I had to like reread, 'cause I was thinking, yeah, no, you had to pay tax on them.
And well, do we have, how many people are interested in moving forward with something like this? One, two, three, four? Okay. And I assume we'll be, so, Carl, can you come back with some kind, I guess, an ordinance would we have to do?
But now, are we talking about a discussion on it or are we talking about an ordinance that says?
Well, I'd like, if, if there's people interested, I think the next thing is to put something official in paper and make a motion to remove this. Bob?
Your Honor, I think this was generated out of the cooperative relation and I think the borough has yet to discuss it and as we've always said, is that we gotta have cooperation in, in how we manage it. We did away with our, we used to have a tax board or something, but I think that if we, we're interested in moving forward with this, we should tell, you know, bring it up at the next meeting, I think, and work out of that class.
What's your next meeting?
They were gonna take it back to their respective body as well.
Well, tell them there's over four people interested in doing it, um, moving ahead and talk.
Discuss.
Carl, would you like to say something?
Yeah, mildly.
We're mildly interested.
Carl, go ahead.
I think an ordinance is premature. I did have an opportunity to.
I did have an opportunity to look at the borough agenda for their meeting Monday night. I didn't see any discussion of this matter on the Cooperative Relations Committee meets, um, 24th. I think what we can do, if there are four hands indicating that there's interest to have a discussion in greater depth about this, I would word it if there are four hands or four members of the assembly who are interested or open to, to pursuing those discussions further. If the borough isn't interested in doing that, there's really no point in us doing it on our own because it's, it's not tangible. So if that's agreeable with.
Yep, let's take to the moon. That brings us down to seventy, um, no, three, discussion establishing a tax holiday. We, we've done over the, I don't, I don't know if she wants to do something that's already automatic or not, but at least we should make a motion for this year's, um, tax holiday, which is the first Saturday after the perm funds. Is anybody interested in doing that?
Sure.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion. I, I, I guess.
What is the date? Does anybody have that for this year? The first Saturday after the perms?
I, I can try to fill in the dates, Mr. Mayor, if the motion is.
I have no idea, wouldn't it?
Okay, we make a motion for a tax holiday on the first Saturday after the permanent fund is released?
So make a motion to discuss.
Just say, no move.
No move. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Moving second. All right, the motion on the floor is to make the Saturday after the perm funds, and Carl, put in the date, our, um, tax holiday this year, which we've been for several years in a row. And then both the senders to the borough, and they can hopefully do the same thing.
Or, or give, uh, each one something else to do.
Okay. Call the roll.
Kiper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to nothing. That brings us down.
Your Honor, if I could, I will take the council's motion to include that is contingent upon.
Oh, yeah.
The moving aheads.
Understood. Okay, that brings us down to seventy-four. Ordinance mending the, adding new sections to the Catch Canada Municipal Code, Chapter 540 entitled Public Vehicles Concerning Issuance of Accessible Taxi Cab Endorsements and Regulations of Accessible Taxi Cab Operations. First reading.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve in first reading ordinance number seventeen eighteen forty-one, amending and adding new sections to the Catch Canada Municipal Code, Chapter 5.40, entitled Public Vehicles, concerning the issuance of accessible taxi cab endorsements, the regulations of accessible taxi cab operations, and establishing effective date.
Second. Moving in seconds. Dave, do you want anything?
No, I think the discussion we had earlier was, I'm, I'm just glad to hear that it sounds like, um, the, the potential providers are all on the same page. Because that's, that seems to be the main issue.
Dick?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and it sounds like they're, they're in agreement. But I got, I have one question. As I understand it, if, uh, if a cab company takes in one handicap cab, they get a second permit, it's non-handicap. Is there a limitation on how many of them they can get? If, if somebody showed up with six new handicap cabs, they get six other permits. Is there a limitation on how many we're gonna issue? I don't think we got a problem, but I'm just curious.
The way it's presently written, Councilmember Kuz, is that there, there isn't a limit. They have to have at least two. They could have more. And with each one, they have, those that are non-accessible have.
Now, say that again. Each, who, whichever cab company takes it, they gotta have at least two.
Whoever does it has to at least have two, but the way it's written now, they could have more. And for each one they had.
Okay.
They would, it'd be entitled to, that, that new one. And the thought there in the document with Mr. Smith is that aspect of it adds some encouragement. The other aspect of it, obviously, is it may create some type of competitive imbalance between the various operators. Although when I met, uh, earlier, I think it was this week or last week, with, uh, Mr. Smith from sale and both the current cab operators, they, they recognized that that possibility was out there, uh, but seemed, it seemed an acceptable way to handle it, didn't it?
I think the cost is prohibitive.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'll see a problem.
So that's quite a reason why.
Okay.
Thanks, Mitch.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Passes seven, I mean, five to, we're at six to nothing, five. Okay, that brings us down to mending number two, amendment number two to the 2016-19 statewide transportation improvement program. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council direct staff to submit comments on the draft amendment number two to the 2016-19 statewide transportation improvement program as determined by the City Council.
Second.
Moving in second. Carl, did anything change?
Any changes relative to city projects, Mr. Mayor, or to our benefit? The majority of the changes pertain to Gravina access and the discussions that have been going on between the borough and, uh, the Department of Transportation. I can't speak to whether the borough favors what's in the stip or not. Our projects, city projects, everything was favorable.
Right. Dick?
Um, I'm just gonna make a comment. I, I, I think Carl's right on our projects there, they probably make sense if they get to them. But on a personal basis, I have some serious problems with what the borough's trying to do. I don't think they can justify two ferry terminals, one on each side. Plus, I don't think they can justify billing on this side and a front end for other things. But it's, as a citizen, it's pie in the sky, and they don't, they aren't gonna be able to maintain it if they get them. But how you tell some people that, I don't know, except you just keep beating up on them.
Yes.
I'm not sure it's on, you say on the borough side. I'm not sure the borough wants those things. The state wants those things.
The borough wants two ferry terminals?
On both sides?
That's right. One on each, two of them on each side. Because one breaks down, you gotta have another one. And we haven't had that for 50 years.
Right.
So.
I was saying, traditionally, the borough did not want the extra ferry terminals for the very reasons you put, the, we couldn't operate, we couldn't, we couldn't.
No, I, I've heard the borough staff talk about having the extra one in case one breaks down. Because they do break down occasionally, but we've managed to handle it in X number of years. Now, the other part, the big part, the state stealing the money there, that's just our line. But, uh, the part that's going into a couple of those things over there, a waiting facility and new births, to me, are, are a waste of public money. And all I can do is just correct it to somebody or see if it passes.
Waste, first to be here as opposed to being wasted somewhere else.
Let's, let's call the roll.
And what is the direction as we can?
Oh, yeah. We had no other problems, so we don't have to vote on it.
Yeah, we.
No, it's just whatever.
All right, that brings us down to seventy-sixth, ordinance seventeen eighteen thirty-eight, increasing rates and fees for the usage of mortgage facilities, harbor facilities, and the harbor services. First reading, that's the pay for the bonds we used. And the final one. Call the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, shit.
All right, Lou.
Your Honor. I move the City Council to approve first reading ordinance number seventeen eighteen thirty-eight, amend Catch Canada Municipal Code, Section fourteen point four zero point zero two zero, fourteen point four zero point zero three zero, fourteen point four zero point zero three five, fourteen point four oh point zero four oh, and fourteen point four oh point zero five oh, increase rates and fees to use the mortgage facility, harbor facility, harbor master service, and establish effective date.
Second, and I want to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna get fined for this show.
Well, he, he will.
Yeah, I should get the fine.
All right, um, anybody have anything to say? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
All right, we have a final, that's not on the agenda, is that, um, approving the change order number two, contract sixteen twenty-six Tongus Front and Stedman Sewer Force Main Rehabilitation. BAM, alternative motion number two is recommended by the management. Now, Carl, talk to you. If you have to, you make the motion.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve change order number two to contract number sixteen twenty-six, Tongus Front and Stedman Sewer Force Main Rehabilitation, in the amount of sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Bring in total project cost to two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Authorize a budget transfer in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred from the appropriated reserves of the Harbor Construction Fund of the Harbor Department's Front, Stedman Streets, Force, Main Replacement Capital Account for the purpose of funding the Harbor Department's share of change order number two to contract number sixteen twenty-six, and direct the city manager to execute the change order on behalf of the City Council.
Do we have a second? Moving in second. Carl, you want to explain what we got here?
Mr. Mayor, this is part of the silvining project that the council approved last year, a steel heart project, and has completed the work essentially north of the tunnel and working out on Front Street in front of City Hall right now. And in about three weeks, they'll be moving over to Stedman Street for the last, uh, part of that contract. As we've done north of the tunnel and as we're doing now, the intent had been, when we started doing the work on Stedman, we would end up discharging, uh, into the Narrows, in this case specifically in the vicinity of Thomas Basin. There was objection by one or more, uh, members of the public relative to the discharge into the harbor. We had conversations with EPA, uh, about that, including mitigation measures that we could take, uh, to, to minimize the impact. EPA was of the opinion that it was better not to discharge in the harbor and come up with an alternative, or we would, uh, through, we came up with an alternative that was devised by the engineering staff, where we would tie it into the pump station, run a pipe essentially under the bridge, then bring it up back on the upland side, feed it into a manhole at the gravity sewer, in proximity of, uh, Parnassus Potes, actually. EPA has signed off on that, um, and, and has said that would be an acceptable alternative. We looked at a variety of different alternatives. Once we realized that EPA would not accept the discharge into the harbor, one was running a line, uh, along the breakwater and discharging into Tong, uh, into Tongus Narrows. We thought that would fly until the Corps of Engineers got involved, and they said, no, no, no. We need a, a, a permit from us to do that. If we can do that in an expedited manner, we could probably have something deemed in three to four months. That's not gonna tangle with the contract that we currently have with BAM. When this first, uh, came to our attention, that we probably couldn't proceed as we wanted. Our initial discussions were banned, uh, the script had been drafted. We were probably looking at change order in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. Through the efforts of Mr. Hilsen and BAM, they put their heads together and came up with an alternative mechanism by which we could utilize the pumps within the pump station and avoid a whole lot of cost. And that's what's before you tonight. I think it's in the best interest to move forward, uh, get the work done, and, and, and get it behind us before tourism season, uh, starts. So our recommendation is to approve the change order, uh, and that's what we put forward.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm not gonna support this particular alternative. I don't think it's the Harbor Department's fault that we're having to discharge into the harbor. Uh, of course, we thought we had this, uh, under control, and EPA came back and said, no. Looking at what we put into this project for contingency, it was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, or almost, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We've only had one change order, which was about forty-four thousand, and we're looking at another one now for sixty-seven. We still have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in contingency, which is normally used for things that come up in the project. And we're, we're reaching the end of this project. We're coming near the end of it. And so I don't think that, um, I don't think we need to go to the harbor for the sixty-seven thousand.
Anybody else?
Actually.
Dave?
Before I say we're gonna declare a conflict, how long is this going to last and what's it gonna smell like?
It's gonna last, if we stay on schedule, it will last about three weeks. As far as I know, it's gonna be an enclosed pipe. There should not be any adverse odors from, from the pumping.
In the business, it smells like money.
Well. No, it's not, it's not, it's not a cannery.
Yeah.
It's, it's not the smelling. I just wanted to ask, because someone's gonna ask me when I get home.
Yeah. Dick?
Yeah, uh, I, I tend to agree with Bob. I don't think the, even though it may have been a person from the harbor that caused this problem, but it's not, they shouldn't have to be paying for this. It's in a budget. And we, we may want to come in this and take it out. But I do have a question for Carl. I, as looking at the map, it looks like, uh, it's at one point down there where it says pump station one. We're gonna lay a pipe on the ground and run it back under, across and under the bridge and drop it back in a manhole. Is that what we're doing, is we're pumping back?
Do you want to address that?
Good evening. Mark Hilsen, uh, Public Works Director. Councilmember Kuz, if I understand your question, you're questioning the pipe layout in the vicinity of pump station one?
Uh, yeah, you got a red dotted line on that map. Is that the proximity that you're gonna have a pipeline on the surface?
It, it approximates the pipe layout, but it's not on the surface. We believe we could take it under Thomas Street.
Oh, you can put that under the Stedman?
Yes. Well, you could, the dash line by pump station one, uh, goes under Thomas Street, out towards the promenade, and then, and, but under, and then on the beach, and then under the bridge. The only time it's on the surface is in the gutter line, basically, north of the Red Trust Bridge.
Okay.
You mean, Bob?
So where is the manhole next to Parnassus? Is it, which side of the street, what side of the street is it on?
Actually, it's by the, it's, it's, it's not by Parnassus. It's by, by the AFA building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just south of it. It's, it's near the fog line of the road, so it's, uh.
We won't disrupt that too much, yeah.
Right, no. We, we believe we can get, uh, traffic through there. Our intention is to preserve parking through that area as well. That's how we're gonna start out, by laying this pipe in the curb line. So you'll see some traffic control cones, some candlesticks, we call them, uh, with the pipe set right on the edge of that. So people can still park there. We have to take that one step at a time and just make sure, uh, you know, our pipe isn't damaged. But it's a six inch diameter pipe, so it would approximate about what the curb line is. So we, we're, we're gonna shoot for that.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, just so I didn't, um, speak, uh, in regards to, um, the contingency unfairly. Do you see any large issues in the remainder of this project where you might use up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in?
Uh, no, we have, we have one issue that we're working right now. That's about a twenty-five thousand dollar issue related to some valving that we found that was bad. That's the only issue on our radar at this moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor to approve an alternative motion number two. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberton?
No.
They pass this four to two. That brings us down to approval of vouchers, daily news, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the approval of vouchers to kitchen daily news in the amount of five hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving in second. Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us down to managers report. Carl?
Few, Mr. Mayor, uh, we did send out. Few, Mr. Mayor, we did send out prior to the meeting, an updated report on the issue of whether Little Davis Bacon applies to the improvement of Redmond Project that we considered at your last meeting. The State Department of Labor has in fact confirmed that that does apply. On the KPU side, I want to let the council know. Prior to what we received today in precipitation, we had planned to start a 24/7 diesel run on Monday. Discussions with Mark Adams today, that is still our game plan. We're hoping that it will be a short duration, but the swamp is down right now. We just don't have the water. If things warm up, and we have a lot of inflows from the snow that we just had, the lake couldn't recover quickly. But I did want to let the council know that that is a possibility. If things happen over the weekend where it isn't necessary, then we won't do it. I wanted to give the council that update. The other thing I wanted to note, Mr. Mayor, is we're asking for a special meeting at council convenience to start going over the collective bargaining, collective bargaining agreement on the KPU side. That agreement expires at the end of this year. We anticipate negotiations starting sometime in the July timeframe. And we'd like to get the council in executive session, go over the agreement, and share some proposals that we feel are appropriate, and get council input as to what changes, if any, that council would like to see in that CBA. So at council's convenience, we're asking for that meeting.
I'll get with the city clerk, and we'll pick out some days and poll everybody, come up with a date.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Carl? Okay. Now, city clerk's file.
Just one thing, Your Honor. I provided a report to the council discussing the fact that I have received an application for a taxicab certificate of public convenience and necessity. After conversations with the manager's office and the police chief of police, acting chief of police, I contacted the applicant and expressed some concerns that were related to me. And now basically, the ball court is in their hands relative to those concerns. It's on hold at this time.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us down to city attorney's report.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Nearing done. Mayor, oh, we got two executive sessions. Mayor, council comments. Dick?
Yeah, just two. You know, Zach brought up the Uber thing. And I think we need to check and make sure that AML is pursuing this and lend our support to it. I, you know, there's just too many things going on. And I know there's maybe some advantages to it, but, you know, we complain about Amazon and not paying taxes, and this is just Amazon and not paying taxes. Only it's on a closer basis is the way I look at it. So I think that we, the city, need to be in control of it and not the state. So we need to do what we can to do that. The other one is, Mr. Weinstein brought up the crossing lights. And it would be very interesting to see what the cost of those might be in some identified critical locations, because I know there are some critical locations. And along with that, maybe we can even convince the state to put a couple of men downtown here if they do front in Stedman, if we can identify them.
Next, Judy?
Along those same lines, Uber, you know, they were sued. And they argued that it's a technology company, not a transportation service, and therefore ADA regulations don't apply to them. And that was their argument in a recent lawsuit that they had. Also, the bus fare wearable, I'm gonna contact Kathleen and the Winter's Arts Fair. I have what I personally think is a fabulous idea for getting money raised to take care of that and sustain that on a regular basis. So I don't support us giving them the money, but I'm pretty confident there's another way to get somebody to sponsor that.
Excellent. Jenna Lee?
I don't really have anything, but on the, I know on these, I remember when they were here talking about the roads, they did tell us to email the director regarding that. But didn't we also have funding regarding, but it was for off-state road systems for those, wasn't it? Like where we had funding where we could put up certain things. I just remember last year it being mentioned, but it had to be on city property versus state.
Yeah, I'll bring it up here in a minute. Bob?
Yeah, this Uber and Lyft thing is, in the legislature right now, they've had meetings in labor and commerce. Maya Costello is the chair. You know, there's some interesting facts, and the fact that we don't really have a definition for those type of transportation groups. But some of the things that come out of it is the fact that the bill removes the transportation group, the common carriers, and they're not involved in work with the company anymore, because they're outside of that. But the state of Michigan passed regulations in regards to those vehicles, but they included taxicabs. So the state of Michigan regulates taxis and these Uber and Lyft groups. And within their regulations, they have that they have to meet all the inspections, the background. You know, and inspections have to be done through mechanics. They have to register annually, and they have to pay a per-vehicle fee to the state of Alaska, different things like that. So there's way to the management if that's gonna move forward. But I would really, I haven't had the chance to go through and read the bill and see what's in there. So I think that's the first option, to try to figure some of that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mark?
In regards to the Uber and Lyft concern, I saw the bill today, read through it briefly. There's no standards for the vehicles whatsoever. And I have a lot of past experience in a lot of different venues in the taxi industry in this town. And while I'm most often not a big proponent of government involvement in private industry, the certificate of public convenience and necessity works very well. And if this town is flooded with 500 Uber drivers, downtown is gonna look like it did at the early 90s when tourism wasn't regulated, and we had the Wild West Show on our dock. So if the state decides to pursue this, I think we should send a resolution to them telling them that this is a bad, this is a bad move.
Thanks, Mark.
It's a two-part process. One, we need to make the state prevent going ahead with it. We're probably not gonna stop Uber and Lyft altogether, so we also need to be working on regulations. First of all, make sure that the state does not go ahead with the idea of they're controlling it and it's out of our hands. Then, second of all, we have to come up with our, and there are some things that we need to look at. You know, as much as I like, dislike the whole idea of Uber, because I'm old foggy, I guess, and I appreciate that point one. You know, I think it's the way of the future, but there's gotta be a control over it in the same way as control over the certificate of public convenience. And we can't have 500 or 200 or 196 people picking up folks down the block there. It's not, it's not the way.
So between the next meeting or two, I'm going to get more information on this Uber stuff, if you guys look into it. I've been following Juno, you know, their main thing is a concern about the tourist, what do you call it, venue of, you know, guys, tourists. Tourists. And they're really concerned about that. So that's something I agree we all need to, we need to, as a council, address. On this crossing of lights, and I know Jenna Lee's brought this up when we've talked about it. A friend of mine's got their dog hit crossing the cross, walked on by Carlin and killed last week. And so it came back to the top of my list, too. And then Mayor Weinstein has been working on this, too, and he just happened to be, what do you call it? It was for two, another reason, he came in and said, "Hey, this is something we should look at. They're doing that for Juno and Anchorage." And so I brought this, I made sure he got copies to all of you. And there are several locations, and I know everybody's talked about the hospital. I'm down there by Vigger and AP, and there's areas, we would love to see this. And there is a process, and I was thinking if there's forehands for the council, definitely send a letter to the Southeast Director of the DOT and ask and start our formal, our formal request, which I don't know if we have much of a chance, but then we could look into costs and if we want to hit some of these spots. And at least we have some kind of technology we're looking at that might work. Carl?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just suggest, if you would give us the opportunity to look at the information that was distributed tonight. Weinstein said there are several different types. You could bring back a report, various types, cost, potential locations. So when we write a letter, the council's all on the same page about what we're asking for. I think that might be the better way to go, if that's acceptable.
And then there's an, also, I got complaints downtown by Julie's down there where the tractor's right in the middle of the road. And we got pedestrians going one way. I was driving around the thing trying, and not trying to cause problems for the project, but there might be, it might be nice to have a guy down there giving a little direction. I mean, I just guessed I could go around the guy with the backhoe, and he was halfway in the middle of the street. I just squeezed by, and the road was still open. If they could have somebody maybe to just give a little direction there, or, and then they closed down Dock Street, you know, off and on. Which they opened up thinking this, but they got that guy with the, one of the machine with hauling the gravel that's racing up and down that thing backwards and forward. So just out of my own concern, when I was just trying to figure out what I should be doing down there, I thought, "Well, maybe we should have somebody down here." When they're in the middle of the road, they're moving and lifting up gravel and all that. And I saw they're working late tonight, it might even be over. But today it was an issue.
We'll definitely take a look this morning.
And then, I don't know if I have anything else. That was it. That brings us down to executive session, where our first one is Executive Session A1, Request for Executive Session, City of Ketchikan.
So Mayor, excuse me, just, I need to make clear, relative to the Uber Lyft issue, you're not asking for us to take any specific direction yet, is that?
I thought you were gonna bring the report back to us so we could make...
I'm just trying to clarify, you want me to bring, like, a resolution back, a report?
I'll bring back a report and...
Okay, I can do that.
I'm trying to think. Never heard us to put a little resolution together in case we all love it.
Yeah, I think that the main point is that we're gonna see how it's gonna affect us in regards to taxes and other things, and make sure that there are some regulations being considered by the state in regards to, you know, maintenance on the vehicles, registration, the background, all that kind of stuff, so...
And encourage local...
Yeah, this point, the main thing is keep it, keep it local, you know, let us deal with it. Don't just give us something that we can't...
I'm gonna try to get hold of Wes and, Wes and Iler was, he worked for Stedman's office for a number of years, and now he's working for me, and he's on top of this stuff.
Dick?
Should we anticipate these guys showing up and go ahead and put something started on the books? To control, like you try to meet everything that dads meet?
Isn't Alaska Municipally working on this too?
Yes, they are, too.
So everyone can find out what they're...
I will contact them tomorrow.
And we have one last question. Who wants to do radio, Mark? Okay, thank you. All right, now do we have a motion for executive session? Steve Ketchikan?
I move the city council to clarify, consistent with the city attorney's request dated February 21, 2017, it is best interest of the city council to discuss the pending litigation of the city versus Mancini, ETL, and give direction to the city attorney in handling the matter in executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 and 3, and include the need to discuss subject and knowledge of which would have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney's fine privilege.
All right, we have a second. Moved in second. Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yep.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Piper?
No.
I don't wanna hear this guy's name anymore.
I passed this one. We'll get in here, get in there, get it done, and get back. Let's go. Get late. No action this time. We gave direction to management and our council. The second executive session is, Carl says we can do it at our next meeting. No rush, and so decided to keep going and get in higher. We will move back to the following meeting. So that leaves us with one last decision. Thank you, Bob.